All right. Good evening. It is 6:00 PM, Tuesday, March 25th, City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the press and public are duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Join me in standing for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we thank you for the beauty of the day and the beautiful weather, for the gift you've given to us. Thank you for the opportunity we had to serve this great community. Just pray that you will guide our conversations and discussions and decisions we make here tonight, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nicole, you want to do a roll call?
Sure. Councilmember Carroll?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Fregoso?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Hahn?
Here.
Councilmember Streitman?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Mayor Pounds?
Here.
Mayor Quorn?
Thank you. First item is citizens' comments.
Randy Bell?
Hello, Randy Bell, 41st Avenue. Let's start with a handout of Governor McMasters' proclamation designating last week his Sunshine Week. It begins with "A government that is open and accountable to its citizens." Therein lies the problem. If there's any confusion with South Carolina's requirements for transparency, might I suggest calling Desiree Fregoso, your MASC representative? Mayor Pounds did, in fact, approach multiple individual council members. Mayor, just waiting to see if I have attention. With an unauthorized unethical discussion with Deputy Administrator Carr, these discussions included confidential information from the formal search process. The mayor also suggested not interviewing the three formal candidates. Please explain tonight how and when exactly Mr. Carr was inserted into the search process. There is no public record. Yet Mr. Carr was formally interviewed on February 4th along with the three selected candidates. Perhaps our search firm, Find Great People, may offer a more transparent explanation. Their contract terms with IOP state there is a fee obligation for candidates that they refer. They did not refer Douglas Carr to this council. The search firm should be concerned for many reasons, not just the non-referral. Complicity by anyone in a corrupt process publicly is never good. In fairness to FGP, three highly qualified candidates were referred but ignored. Mayor, your late-night epiphany to improperly entice Mr. Carr probably should have included Ms. Fregoso as well, because at $180,000, she might have had interest in a $38,000 salary increase. Administrator's Fregoso's timing was impeccable. There are no easy remaining wins for IOP. A new city administrator must engage across all levels of government, state and federal, experience, ability, and desire, as stated by Tony Santiago in the last meeting. Our citizens require an administrator up to the task, not seeking short-term retirement benefits. Council will likely approve Mr. Carr with a highly unethical and corrupt process tonight. FOIA law requires disclosure of the approved pay package. There can be no slow-walking public disclosure. Have the guts tonight to tell the public exactly what you approve. That means full disclosure. And our citizens are not, as Councilmember Ward stated, disciples of doom, nor are we disciples of dumb. Thank you.
Good evening. Catherine Malloy, Waterway Boulevard. I'm here to address unethical behavior of the search process for the new city administrator. Please note, my comments are based on process, facts, and behaviors. In my work life, I participated in numerous search processes, both as a member of search committees and also as an applicant. I have never seen an abrogation of process as this search for the IOP city administrator. And there are two questions that need to be answered. Why would the mayor choose to subvert the hiring process? Why would six members of this council support unethical behavior? Facts. The mayor, acting unilaterally, without authority from council, even after three candidates were selected and plans were made for their transportation and interviews, spoke to the assistant administrator about the position, sharing privileged information with him about salary expectations of the three candidates. FOIA request was made on January 24th for candidate documents. The sunshine shed by the FOIA documents are testament to the highly successful search that had occurred with the selection of three eminently qualified individuals having stellar credentials. Even though citizen comments doesn't allow time for detailed analysis, looking at the academic and experience qualifications would be helpful. All three have master's degree in public administration and/or related field, all have certifications above and beyond the degrees. All three have years of experience in city management, with one having 20 total years and seven years in town management in a coastal community. By comparison, the internal candidate has a bachelor's degree in urban planning, no advanced degree or certifications, 28 years with the city of IOP in numerous roles, none of which include the necessary executive experience to lead the city the size of IOP nor manage a city budget. Until December 31st, 2024, the city's budget was managed by City Administrator Fregoso. The interim administrator was only four weeks into this role before the process went wry. Objectively, there was no need to introduce an internal candidate. So I'm leaving you with one more question. Beside the stain on this council, what is it going to cost the taxpayers? I'm betting at least $180,000. Thank you.
Hear me? Okay. Al Klaus, Three Green Pavilion. As the mayor's ill-advised off-balance-sheet agenda to hire a city administrator continues to vacillate, many constituents continue to express frustration and displeasure with the mayor and city council, who continue to shoot themselves in the foot. Previously, constituents offered the mayor and council a realistic lifeline to correct the sins of the past, only to fall on deaf ears. The mayor's spin, failing fact-check, never achieved orbit. In November, when the Court of Public Opinion speaks, hearing will improve. My open letter to the three finalists. I sincerely want to apologize to you regarding the recent IOP train wreck, which you were a casualty. You were given false hope, lack of transparency by this city regarding selection of a city administrator. Starting the interview process, you had to be thinking, "IOP, definitive ground rules, professional recruiting firm, what could possibly go wrong?" Finalists, I have walked 10 miles in your shoes. I know how your feet feel. I am sure you felt betrayed, because you were. Your presentations were professional, only to be carelessly wallpapered over with a one-page document affectionately titled "Forgone Conclusion." No, you did nothing wrong. Do not second-guess yourself. This is a classic case of learning the hard way, finding it is difficult to trust people you thought you could trust till you cannot. Clearly, your potential employer was afraid of your medicine. They feared their inability to micromanage you. But they found someone they could, pissing backwards at your expense. I was told by a reliable source, "Communities like ours do this all the time. We can do anything we want to." In other words, let's lower ourselves to someone else's level. It is unfortunate. Our mayor and council elevated your expectations, wasting your time. They defied constituents' resounding pleas to acknowledge their mistake and do the right thing. In retrospect, they did you a favor. Zebras do not change their stripes. The paymaster's currency is tainted, drastically devalued. Leadership skills require constant honing. You have just learned how not to lead. We, the constituents of IOP, wish you the very best. Sincerely, Al Klaus. Thank you.
Good evening. Susie Wheeler, Hartnett Boulevard. I'm here as a concerned citizen, just as I was last month. Last month, all of the public speakers shared a common theme. We were all concerned with how the process of choosing a city administrator played out. I don't recall a single speaker lauding how the mayor and council have handled the recruitment of candidates and the processing of applications. Many of us had and still have grave concerns about how it was handled, based on ethics, transparency, and process. I've written to all members of council and the mayor, asking when the issues of alleged cursing, threatening, and violent behavior involving two members of council in the February 13th executive session would be addressed. After one month, I have gotten zero responses. I have also not heard the mayor address the allegations that many city employees were actually watching the video of the executive session. He was very vocal about how those sessions should remain private. Why is there a double standard? I understand there are a great many people happy with the outcome of allowing an applicant to submit 60 days after the deadline. And while we may be happy with the outcome, it's a very slippery slope to allow rules to be ignored, processes to be corrupted, based on only getting the outcome that you want. I recently saw an IOP city post about extending the deadline for a Board of Zoning Appeals committee application, but I've been unable to find the same notification about extending the deadline for the city administrator, which is arguably a much more important position. In fact, I can't find where adding a candidate after the deadline was discussed in any way. This does not follow tenants for integrity and transparency. I'm fascinated that some members of this council, when faced with constituents that publicly oppose how they have handled or really mishandled this entire process, are entirely dismissive. It's fascinating, because these same constituents, who were once labeled supporters, campaigners, and allies, are now referred to as noise, disciples of doom, liars. It might serve counsel to remember that the disciples of doom and the liars carry not just noise, but votes at election time, and our numbers are far greater than those showing up to speak at meetings. So when the votes don't go your way next election, remember, it's just effing math.
Good evening. Brian Duffy, Waterway Boulevard. I've been wondering if council believes in contracts. Then I thought to myself, "Of course you do. Young homes." So that means you entered a contract with a real estate agent, a bank, and a seller of that property to get that home. So at some level, you do believe in contracts. But do you believe in implicit contracts? Is there something I don't understand? The city commenced a contract with Find Good People, effectively making them an agent of the city to find a new city administrator. The city, represented by the Administration Committee, supported FGP in following their very timely process and allowing them to identify five qualified candidates that the Administration Council narrowed to three. To use a baseball analogy, FGP and the Administration Committee identified three major-league candidates, all with all-star potential. In the allotted timeframe, it's quite clear that the FGP screening process works very well, and the Administration Committee had done its due diligence. A very successful process at this point. So what happened? What happened? Did the fear of success set in? Did the fear of competence rear its ugly head? How is it that three experienced candidates, undoubtedly with knowledge of home rule statutes, the ability to run an organization, and thank you for the disruption, and the skill to handle politicians and help them fulfill their role, get bypassed? How did the city's implicit contract for a fair process with these candidates get broken? The FGP contract states, "During the retained search process, the client agrees that all candidates, internal and external, will go through the FGP screening process." Did the internal candidate go through the FGP screening process? How did the internal candidate compare to the external candidates? I certainly hope the internal candidate was submitted to the same rigorous process. Otherwise, it is an example of the city breaking an explicit contract. I would not be surprised if litigation were to follow. So how is this broken process and ignorance going to impact the city's budget going forward? I'm betting the total compensation package will increase to $240,000.
Mr. Duffy, can you wrap your comments up, please?
Certainly. But you interrupted me with that noise, so I'm going to finish on my time. Thank you. I'm betting the total compensation package will increase to $240,000 with a net increase of $60,000 to the budget. Apparently, this is the cost when council chooses to protect their own comfort level rather than protecting the stakeholders of the island. Thank you very much. Thank you for your attention.
I'm not sure how to follow all of that. Douglas, totally different topic. Oh, excuse me here. Let me introduce myself. My name is Jimmy Bernstein. I live at 13 Beachwood East. I feel like I'm in front of very familiar people who have gotten to know me. My property is right on the ocean and is severely damaged by the erosion. And I think that I'm here, really, to be in uplifting comments. I first want to thank the whole council for your consideration and support of our beachfront area and trying to find a solution to the erosion, which is severe. I've been in front of you a number of different times, and I think that tonight's, my comments tonight are going to be directed towards the opening of the shoal bids and being an advocate for the project, although reserved in some variables that need to be solved. I am supportive of the shoal project, because I think we have the opportunity to reinforce the beach and make it much more accessible for transient guests. I can tell you that during the past couple of weeks, if not longer, the low tide mark still has not cleared the basement of my garage, of my house. So you still can't walk past the, my neighbor's rock reventment. That's okay. I'm hoping that the shoal project will raise the level, but I can tell you, I think that that outcome is by no means guaranteed. I think the auxiliary question is concerning the sandbags that the city has installed in front of our, the beachfront, and that the requirements under the permit require pulling those sandbags up, which I dramatically oppose, because it seems like that that's the only safeguard we have towards the shoal project not living up to its expectations. And unfortunately, I'm a little tainted, because I have seen several other attempts at doing the very same thing, harvesting sand from shoals and placing it on the beach, only to find that the ocean has come and swept it away within a couple of months, leaving the beach barren. And that, of course, would be a terrible outcome for the homeowners. So we need the sandbags. I have been in communication, I feel very fortunate, that I was able to make contact with the Columbia DES authorities.
Mr. Bernstein?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll leave your record.
I have been in touch with Myra Reese and her lieutenants, who have come to visit me and the house. And as of yesterday morning in my conversation with her, she has told me, "Jimmy, we understand, we see, and we will support the cities and your," because I understand the cities behind it also, "but we will support your efforts to keep the sandbags." That's truly my request and my encouragement, that I'm in favor of the project, but let us keep the sandbags and keep protecting the shoals, or our helms as best you can." So thank you very much. Thank you, Jimmy.
Great. Thank you. Next item is approval of previous meetings minutes. We have the City Council meeting on February 25th, Special City Council Workshop on February 26, Special City Council Workshop on March 11, and Special City Council meeting on March 12. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any edits or changes?
Only comment I have is on February 25th, it says citizens' comments are attached, but it doesn't seem to be attached.
Oh, did I forget to? Okay. I'll resend those to you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the other one is on February 26th, and I don't recall the motion that was made, but it said staff. I think Councilman Hahn made the motion around authorizing staff to negotiate those two motions that were passed. And I'm not sure it's staff or we authorize FGP.
It was staff.
Was it?
It was staff. That was the word that was used, was staff, and to me, that implied FGP.
That's the 26th, John. Minutes.
That's the 25th minute.
Twenty.
26 minutes.
Okay.
And just for the record, who did the actual negotiation? Maybe we can put some footnotes in here. Who actually were the participants in any, in all negotiations? Can we get that?
I don't know how important it is. It's just, I thought we authorized FGP and MAC to go forward to negotiate it. To me, that wasn't staff, but.
For the record, that is how it happened. FGP and.
Jeff Shastky and MAC are the two?
Okay. Maybe we just clarify that somehow.
Well, I mean, I can't change the wording of the.
No, but I mean, for the next, in the next minutes? Maybe, I think in the next minutes for this meeting, we just clarify what that meant.
That's all I have.
Other edits or changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. No old business, new business, many of these we've discussed in pretty good detail at our workshop. First one is consideration of purchase of Public Works Director Truck, $43,444, from Ford of Spartanburg, with a VA state contract. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next two items are dealing with the new rollout cards. First one is consideration of purchase of 1,100 rollout cards, $74,809,009, from equipment sole-source contract. You can see our budget number there. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Nicole, were you good? Sorry.
Yes, sir. I'm fine. Thank you.
Next item, C, consideration of purchase of 1,100 rollout card assembly and delivery via Container Pros. Again, you can see the combo budget there, $14,025 for this particular item. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is consideration of a word of contract for palm tree trimming, $28,080. Planet Green Landscaping, you can see our budget number there, this is coming in just under budget. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, consideration of shoal management. Bids were open this morning at 10:00 AM, so we have some conversation and updates. Douglas and/or Stephen, y'all want to take it from here?
Yeah, I'll just kind of talk through the bids that we received and where we are in terms of the city's budget. This was contemplated in our budget at being a $787,000 project with Wild Dunes Community Association paying 600 of that, and our city budget including 187,500 of that. We had, we received two bids this morning. One bid was $1,007,500, and one bid was $978,000 even. And so we clearly have a, we have an over-budget issue. There was a, as we've discussed this, we think you have at least three options. One would be.
Excuse me, Douglas. Before you go on, what's driving the, I mean, we've made assumptions on our beetroot nourishment based on deployments and per cubic yards of this and that. Why, I mean, are we just estimating that's like a 20% off or 3% off? Are we, are we underestimating what it's taken to do these projects?
I think that's fair to say that our estimate was low.
Yeah, I think when the, when the city budget was built for this, for this fiscal year, we were going off some assumptions, still higher than prior bids, but just things have gotten really a lot more expensive in the construction world the past 24 months, so the bids have come back a little bit higher. I will say they're lower than they could have been, based on some other projects. Recently, Seabrook had 150,000 yards, shoal, or sand harvesting project that was bid at over $7 a yard. So the current low bid per yard is 452 per yard, but there's a pretty substantial mobilization. The other unit cost was 650 per yard. So they were a little higher than we were hoping for, but within reason of what's been out there lately.
So the kind of three options that we see, we have, we could potentially lower the amount of sand that we harvest. The bids were for 150,000 cubic yards. If we lowered that amount down to 121,000 cubic yards, we could, we could do the project within budget, but it obviously would be less sand than we had, we had planned for. It's kind of option one.
What's the impact of less sand, though?
What's the, what is the difference in reducing 30,000?
What's the downstream impact? I mean, what do we, yeah, what's, you know, if we decide to do that, what are we risking?
Stephen, you want to answer?
I think with a lower volume, we set the base bid at 150,000, which was towards the low end of what we think needs to happen to kind of give us some security that this project will be successful to get us through where we're at right now in the shoal cycle. I believe about 120,000 yards is really the minimum that I would even recommend. I think anything lower than that, we really are jeopardizing the ability to withstand the current erosion pressure, especially at the Beachwood East area. Right now, the shoal is attached, and there's a huge amount of sand right in front of the Beach Club Villas, Property Owners Beach House, and over to Mariners Walk. There's a separate arm of the shoal that's extending offshore of the eastern part of Beachwood East, that's still about 400 to 500 feet offshore. It's moving rapidly, but until it gets closer to the beach, we will still have some focused erosion in that area. So this project is by no means a guarantee that if we move, you know, 50,000 yards into that area, that, you know, six to 12 months from now, it's going to be a wide, dry sand beach. You're going to have to, you have to put enough volume to try to, you know, get through this last phase of the attachment on that west side.
Can you clarify something for me, Steve? You said that the minimum that you put out there was 150,000 to make it what you thought would work, and then you said a couple of sentences later that the lowest I'd go is 120,000. Doesn't sound to me that 120 is a high-confidence number. Is that?
It's kind of what I would consider the bare minimum for a viable project. 150 is closer to what I would recommend. If the bids were really favorable and we could go higher than that, then I would certainly suggest going higher than that to offer the most guarantee. Part of, and to get Mr. Bernstein's comment about the sandbags, we submitted a letter to the state yesterday offering some justification for allowing us to leave sandbags in place, at least to get us through hurricane season at the end of November. That would give us about six months to evaluate how well this project's working, putting some conditions on it, that if it, it looks like the project's working really well, and we have a sustainable dry sand beach, and we're not seeing the continued. have a sustainable dry sand beach, and we're not seeing the continued rapid erosion, then that would give us confidence to remove the bags. So, I think having a lower volume, but the ability to leave these bags in place, you know, is kind of a, a good partnership and kind of protection. So, if we have a major storm event, or this, this rapid erosion continues, then the sandbags would still be there, but we're hoping that we wouldn't have to face that.
And Stephen, what's your, what's best guess on how long it'll take them to turn that around from a request standpoint? I mean, it's not a permit, so it's not.
It should be a couple of days, I think, at most.
And I guess, to Scott's question, if you're doing a hundred-and-twenty-thousand or a hundred-and-fifty-thousand, I mean, the bags being able to remain there is pretty critical, regardless how much sand we're putting down.
I think at this point, yes. With the uncertainty with the way these shoals, you know, move onshore and where the focused erosion is, and the storm events, you know, as we're getting into hurricane season, it's certainly a worthwhile backup protection measure. I will say with the bid structure the way it was, four dollars and fifty-two cent per yard, you're spending a lot of money on the mobilization, so adding additional yardage, you're getting a lot more bang for your buck at that point.
Yeah, and where would you, how would you compare the degree of success between the hundred, I mean, I think Jimmy would be interested in the answer to this question, a hundred-and-twenty-thousand versus a hundred-and-fifty-thousand?
Yeah, so, those sections of the beach, we were looking at the volume change over the past six months, and that's less than six months' worth of erosion, or, excuse me, that thirty thousand yards is greater than six months' worth of erosion when we're in our most rapid erosion period. So, I feel very confident that thirty thousand yards placed in one area is at least six months' more protection.
Mayor.
That's good to know.
Could you, last time this was done in front of Mr. Bernstein's house, there was probably a hundred yards of sand between his house and the water. Can you, just visually, what's a hundred-and-fifty-thousand yards do versus a hundred-and-twenty-thousand yards as far as, how far out is it going to go from the shore?
Sure. So, a hundred yards seems higher than, I think it was right after the project, I think it was a little thinner than that, but you should see a difference of about fifty feet to seventy feet of dry sand with an extra thirty thousand yards if it's all placed in one relatively narrow area.
So, so the hundred-and-twenty would say be seventy-five yards from his house?
Yes.
And then, okay, and then we're talking another fifty to seventy-five feet?
Yes. Again, the sand's going to spread rapidly in that area, there's still a pretty dynamic process going on.
Thank you.
And Douglas, can you talk to the split with Wild Dunes? You know, what's proposed, what's on the table, and some of our options?
Right. So, the, the budget that was created and in this year's fiscal year budget was based on a twenty-five, seventy-five percent split. The city paying twenty-five, Wild Dunes Community Association paying seventy-five. That split was chosen last year based on prior history with these projects and prior shares. The, and, and obviously, if the city were to want to increase this project to become the full scale as what was requested bids for, there would need, need to be both a component of the city paying more, additionally, the Wild Dunes Community Association. They, they currently have budgeted six-hundred thousand. They have indicated via email that, that they don't think there's a likelihood of, of their budget increasing. So, the next two options, one would be that the city just increase, the, increase their contribution to meet the full-scale budget based on the twenty-five percent sharing. And then the other kind of third option would be that the city just cover the entire difference of the amount in the budget and, and the amount bid upon. And that, that would increase the city's contribution from a hundred-and-seventy, a hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand to three-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand.
Well, I was just going to say, the three-twenty-eight would require them to put more than six-hundred in then?
It would not.
Well, if you take a nine-seventy-eight bid, right?
Well, we're taking out.
And take twenty out, so that's nine-fifty-eight.
The sandbag portion of that.
The sandbag portion of it, if I'm correct, that's nine-fifty-eight. You put six-hundred, they put six-hundred in.
That's fifty-one.
That's three-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand that we'd have to put in.
Sorry to interrupt you. The, the bid for the parent low bidder for the sandbag removal was fifty thousand. So, we would be removing fifty. We think that in the future, when we would need to remove the bags, we can probably do that for twenty. So, that's.
So, you're taking fifty.
Okay.
Correct. And Douglas, this, this option three that you just ran through, if the city put in the three-hundred-plus-thousand, I mean, that, that gets to roughly the forty-five percent, fifty-five percent split that's come out of the Beach Ad Hoc Committee, right? Rough numbers.
I think that's more like a, well, in addition to the work we're talking about tonight, just the, just the sand moving, we're going to have construction administration, which is next on your agenda.
Yeah, got you.
We're going to have a certain, we're going to have a certain cost in the future. We think it'll be twenty thousand dollars for the sandbag removal. We're going to have a certain cost for truck monitoring. So, that increase, that, that cost will ultimately increase, but I, I think it's more like a thirty-five percent. I did the math earlier, I thought it was thirty-five, sixty-five.
Yeah, because we're, currently, we're paying a hundred percent of the consulting services on every project. So, I think we got to, we got to have an all-in number. And, yeah, it, it sounds to me like the city's contributing more and more. As, as the project grows, it's all on us. And I'm not, I'm not sure what conversations we've had with Wild Dunes, but I think we probably need to have more.
Yeah, we, I mean, the, the city has paid for all of the emergency work so far, we have paid for all of the, all of the consulting work, all the permitting work. It's on your agenda tonight to pay for all the construction administration, closeout work, so.
Yeah, I think our forty, I think our forty-five's going, you know, significant, the tendency seems to be where all of the additions are coming our way, we're going a lot further north than that forty-five percent. And I think we need to have an all-in number here. Because you just, you just talked about three or four different things that are going to go on during the project, and we don't have those numbers all in, in front of us.
Yeah, they could be, other than the, the rest are fairly, I mean, we have twenty for the bag removal, we have less than ten, I would think, for the truck counting, but we could, we do have other amounts, I think they're.
And are, do we feel solid about those estimates, based on the estimates we just got on the, on the bid? I mean, do we, do those all need to be refreshed?
We, we have current, we have current numbers for all of those, except for we do not have a solution for counting trucks yet, but I don't think that, that's going to be kind of an hourly rate as we can fill it with a low-cost person, hopefully. So, I think we have, I think we have accurate numbers, except for that portion, to your point, we haven't presented all those to you. We could certainly do that.
I mean, I, I'd like to see us do the hundred, and this is just me personally, I think to do the hundred-and-fifty-thousand buys us six months because we've got the big renourishment in, but we don't know exactly when that's going to occur. If it buys us six more months for that extra thirty thousand, I just think we ought to get back to the table with Wild Dunes and figure out what's an equitable split, if that's possible.
One option that could be considered would be to, and forgive me because it may require different types of council approval, but approve up to that full amount, the hundred-and-fifty-thousand. We could initially award a project of a hundred-and-twenty-one, which is, or that hundred-and-twenty, which is, we see kind of the bare bones, and then as the project progresses, we'll be able to evaluate how the beach is changing, how the field is kind of playing out, and then we could, if we felt like we really needed that extra thirty yards, award it as a add-on to the contract.
And that doesn't, that doesn't delay getting us underway?
No, it won't delay us at all.
That's a great, that's a good idea.
And you, you could either, you could either approve, as Stephen suggested, all of it with a caveat that we'll, we'll make a judgment when the time comes, or it could be, the timing, this will take probably six weeks, so your, your April meeting would be timed, and, you know, we, we should have a decent idea how it's, how it's holding up at your April meeting.
They're likely not to start placing until about the second week of April, maybe late first week of April.
And it's April twen-
So, we may not have.
April twenty-second.
We could have two weeks' worth of, so.
At that point.
I just feel like, I feel like we just keep having these very casual comments about Wild Dunes. I mean, we're, we're getting ready to embark on a large, very expensive project. I, I don't feel, who's talking to Wild Dunes and who at Wild Dunes is, is communicating this? I mean, do we, are we going to have a contract? Or are we just going to hope that they chip in what we want? I mean, I, I just, I don't really understand where we are on this, and I don't feel comfortable at all just saying that, gosh, I hope it turns out okay.
We had a contract in the past. You kind of liked it for the prior project.
I'm talking about today.
I suspect that that's a pretty good go-by, like, because it's a very detailed, well-thought-out, long contract, dealing with sort of all the potential contingency and other stuff.
So, are we, are we there? I mean, do we, have they agreed to said contract?
No. No, and I, and I would just, we would have, so typically, as Mac is saying, the city has been the primary contract, holds the primary contract with the, with the contractor. We've then been reimbursed by Wild Dunes. We would have an agreement with Wild Dunes for that reimbursement. We have been, we have been coordinating with their, with their community association manager. They happen to be in a situation today where they actually don't have several board members. So, there is going to be.
Well, they do now. Elected during this past weekend.
Well, I don't know if they've taken their seat. He, he's saying that he cannot get back kind of a firm answer until at some point later in the, later this week, maybe early next week. Along the way, though, they, they have held kind of very firm in, in all of our meetings with them that they have six-hundred-thousand dollars allocated to this project. We have been going to them anticipating that the cost would be more, and they have here recently said, we don't think there's a willingness for our board to go more than six-hundred thousand.
So, we have a budget too. And, you know, I, I guess I'm, you know, I understand that, and I, and by the way, I, I respect their position. I think what's happened is our estimates are failing to come through as, you know, they're, they're off by orders of magnitude when we get to thirty percent range. And, you know, I, if we're being responsible for the estimates, I can, you know, I'd have a little bit of sympathy with Wild Dunes, saying, you know what, this is what we budgeted based on these estimates, and you gave us these estimates. On the other hand, you know, we can't continue to just, we're going to pump money along with the sand like this at, without having some kind of an agreement in place. Maybe they should get, maybe we should ask them to participate a little bit more in some of the upfront, since, especially since the project's in their domain.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I'd just like to say that I think we're betwixt and between right now. There was this original shoal management contract, and there was an agreement with an estimate of how much Wild Dunes would pay and how much the city would pay.
Not an agreement. Not a, not a written agreement. There's been dialogue, but never.
Dialogue, okay. But they agreed that they would pay seventy-five percent of the cost, which was six-hundred-thousand dollars, and that's what they put in their budget. Now that the Beach Advocates Committee has come out with a different recommendation.
We have not. I want to make that perfectly clear. We have not come out with a recommendation. We've come out with some discussion about some possibilities of how we split the money. But we've got, that's got to be a council decision, we need to peel these numbers back, and we need to get good estimates, so.
And we've been requesting more information from Wild Dunes every single time, and it's never come.
So, I think this is the, this is the time where we need to sit down with the two parties.
I agree.
And work it out.
As we've been saying.
I think there's a willingness to cooperate on both sides, that we just need to follow through with it, whether it's, you're not getting the data, or they're not meeting or whatever. Let's, let's make it happen. I think they're ready to sit down, especially because they want this work done.
I agree with you. I think they're more than willing to sit down and put something together, I think.
But isn't, isn't timing a problem with that? I mean, we, I mean, we're worried about them getting back to us by the end of the week, whether they can go higher than six-hundred, and we want to sit down and negotiate long-term what the sharing is going to be for nourishment. I just don't, I see that getting in the way of the timing of this project.
I agree.
So, I, I think as an alternative, I mean, what we could do is approve option two here, which says, we're going to keep our share, they're going to keep their seventy-five percent share. We'll go up to the hundred-and-fifty cubic yards, whatever that increase on both sides is, but it's contingent on them approving it. If not, then we'll go to option one, which will lower the sand, and we'll all be at wherever our, wherever the budgeted number was. But I, I think we should approve, we should at least let them know that we want to go forward. We've contributed a lot in the permitting and the management of the project and all these other costs. We want to keep at the twenty, seventy-five, twenty-five. We're willing to go to the higher one-fifty level, but it requires them to contribute at that same level as well. And if not, then we'll go to the lower sand level. And, you know, that's not optimal, but it's still, I think, is going to give protection where it's needed.
And to that point, timing is critical. And we're, we're trying, the way it's written now, we have them finished by the beginning of June, so they're working half of April, all of May, and they are having to scramble to get the trucks. They only have five hours to work, really right around low tide, so they're, they're having to size their crew to, to really go, you know, go at it intensely for those five hours each day to make that deadline. Each day becomes more and more critical. They did, they did kind of indicate that there would be a little bit of a relief if the amount was lower. They could, they could not have to kind of work as intensely at each low tide, so it could have a, an overall cost savings of a, of a bit. But to your point, your timing, we don't, I don't think we really have time to call meetings and, and kind of start a fresh negotiation.
We should do that for the next one, but I don't think it's available for this one.
And Steve.
Go ahead.
I think for this one, Stephen's recommendation was perfect. You contract for the work with the first level that we know is affordable, which is a hundred-and-twenty-thousand, twenty-one-thousand cubic yards, with a supplement that could be activated upon negotiation of the additional amount. That way, we can start now, today, you know, tomorrow, get the work underway, and make the decision for the, for the supplement within a month. Is that what you said? A month or two months? Whatever it is, when they're, when they're ready to start, when they've, you know, already placed a hundred-and-twenty thousand.
It would really be middle of May that we would, I mean, that would be the perfect kind of time that we will have seen enough as to how it's reacting. Happens to not coincide exactly with your meeting, but we could, we could give you an update in April and shoot for a meeting in May.
And Stephen, there, in this scenario, they're working one low tide only, right? Just given the timing and?
If the tide occurred early in the morning and late in the evening, say like a six o'clock AM, six, five PM, they may be working both tides.
Got you.
Yes, and I, I do want to double-check our number. I, I believe for about a hundred-and-twenty thousand, the total price is about seven-ninety-seven, so that's, I think, just a little above our budget. So, it may require a slight increase.
I mean, our, our budget's seven-eighty-seven-five right now, right? So, we're ten. And Stephen, I know you're, you work on projects all up and down the coast from New York further. You know, it feels like where there's dredging or shoal management or sandbags, I mean, everything's at a surge price right now. I mean, we can estimate the heck out of whatever we want to, but it just, it feels like this whole industry is, there's such a need for dredging and shoal management and whatever else is happening along the coastline. You know, the bids we did, or the estimates we might have done two years ago, four years ago, are, are really obsolete, it seems like, given what's going on right now.
They are. There were two recent projects in the northern part of the state in North Carolina that were canceled because the dred, those are dredging projects because the bids came in about double their engineer's estimate. So, it's certainly the industry. And we did compress this project, it was a very short time window for, for the bids and for construction, so we were kind of, we may have eliminated some competition with just a very short timeframe for construction.
So, if we, depending on what we decide tonight, I mean, how fast do you think they could mobilize?
I think they could be here by the second week of April.
Okay. So, three weeks, two weeks-ish.
So, is the motion to proceed with the hundred-and-twenty thousand, is that where So is the motion to proceed with the 120,000, is that where we're looking? How would we word this, Stephen? What are you looking for?
That's what you said.
Yeah, I think that's what John said. Go ahead.
Possible extension?
Yeah, John, won't you restate?
Well, I don't know if, what I was saying is that we were going to approve two, but if Wild Dunes didn't agree with it, we were going to go to one.
Correct.
Is that what we, is that the motion?
So we could certainly ask, in the meantime, if they, if they would have a willingness to match, to basically increase their contribution to, to option two, and we could report that back to you in, in April. So maybe make the motion for option one, and then if we can get...
I would like to make a motion that we go, that we approve option two, is contingent on Wild Dunes contributing their 75%. And if they don't, we revert to option one.
I'll second that. Nicole, is that clear from a motion standpoint?
I got it.
Yep, directional. Got a mo, Stephen, you good?
Yeah, I think I'm good, other than that's going to put us just a little lower than 121,000 of my calculations. I think we're...
In the neighborhood?
Yeah.
Close enough.
Yeah. We've got a motion and a second. Other questions or...
Can I, can I just make a, interject a comment? A lot of this, I think, in, in our minds is, is hinging on a favorable response from BCM about leaving the sandbags in. If we do not get a favorable response, our plan would be, at this point, to not do this work, based on, I think, the reaction of the owners there and, and concerns about the, the properties being exposed. So I just wanted to make that point to you all, and if, if you feel otherwise, let me know. But that's, I think that would be our assumption, is if we do not get a favorable response from BCM, that we would not do the project.
Show management, the whole thing?
Yeah. Because you're going to, yeah, without the sandbags, you're going to have to expose. And that, but that would can, we would still be moving sandbags from breach inlet to the beach wood.
That's correct.
And our ocean cloud area.
That's correct.
When do we expect that decision?
The OCR, the BCM decision, I think, within a couple of days. We, we hope that'll, and we'll, we'll report that to you as soon as we know.
Do we need to make the motion contingent upon that decision, or do we just have enough to not worry about it? And we all know that'll happen.
I think that'll, yeah, that'll happen.
And I'll just add on that note that the first project is not contingent on any certain permit windows. So you would always have the option at any point in the future to, provided that the contractor will honor their bid, kind of give them the trigger to go ahead and start working. So, you know, in theory, we got to October or something, we could do something then if necessary.
But their bid's good for 30 days, I'm guessing? Yeah. So it would be subject to the whims of whatever's happening at that, at that point.
Can I get a clarification on that? With the sandbags, I mean, the sandbags, according to state regulations now, must be removed before we do renourishment. Is that what's causing this catch-22?
Correct. According to their current regulations, that they would require sandbags to be removed once the emergency situation has passed. So if you place 100 feet of sand in front of those sandbags, then your emergency condition has passed, and they would require removal. Our letter argued that with the current condition of the shoal, we cannot guarantee that, you know, six months to 12 months down the road, that you're not likely to be in another, in another emergency situation. So let us get through this six-month period and evaluate it. And again, with triggers, so that the state has some, some criteria to say, yes, you're not just leaving them in forever, but would allow them to review it after six months and decide whether that emergency condition is likely or not.
Okay. And, and so if the sandbags remain in place, we can add sandbags to that location, which is what we're intending on doing anyway, right?
I think we would add them up into the time that the project would start. I don't think they would have much appetite to add additional ones.
Because that's happening today. I mean, the movement of bags.
We're just moving from breach inlet to hell there, yeah.
And Douglas, what was your answer to Scott's question around, do we need to further clarify on the motion if we...
No, I don't think so. I mean, I think that's our, we're just clarifying it for you all. That's our intention, is to not do the project if we don't get favorable outcome from BCM.
Stephen, anything else? All right. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stephen, thank you. Stay right there. Next item is consideration change order to handle final design, bidding and negotiation and construction administration for show management project for CSE for 136,680. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Stephen, you want to talk through that? I mean, your bids included in the packet, but...
Yeah, it covers our services for actually implementing the project, which covers some of the design and bidding work that's kind of already been completed, but also regular monitoring of the project during filling operations. We're planning on being down here three, four days a week to make sure that the contractor's performing the project well and handling any issues with homeowners that tend to arise with these type of projects, communication with the city and that type of thing. And then it also covers a final survey that's required by the state as part of their permit conditions. However, the proposal states that if we're able to duplicate efforts with our regular monitoring, then we would certainly do that to try to reduce any potential costs. So the proposal is written, covers kind of turnkey services, but I would anticipate that we'd be able to have some significant cost savings by avoiding duplicating some monitoring efforts.
Douglas, anything to add to that? Further questions or... All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Stephen, thank you. Yeah, appreciate your efforts. Next item, consideration of contract with Thorne and Partners, $96,000 annually, split 50% with IOP Water and Sewer Commission. This is for a federal lobbyist. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, consideration of MOU with Charleston County Parks and Rec for future maintenance of emergency beach access path.
Make a motion?
Second.
Could I just, we have still not heard back from the Charleston County Parks people on our proposed comments. And, and I think we could bring this back to you. I think that we've kind of gone back and forth enough times that any, any additions or comments would be minor and editorial in nature. I just wanted to, wanted to ask if, as long as the comments, any edits after this point are only editorial in nature, that staff is authorized to enter into this MOU. The alternative would be, we just plan on bringing it back if there's a single edit. We can go either way. I don't know that timing is critical, just a matter of kind of keeping your agendas. We're happy either way.
I'd be fine. I feel like, you know, anything minor, we should...
Go for it.
We've been, we've been talking about this for a while.
And is this a binding MOU, is it? This is just an MOU?
Yes.
Or is it binding?
I think it would be binding.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, yeah, it's a right of understanding.
Okay.
I feel like we're, we're very close, though, right?
I think so. Yeah, we're down to the fine hairs of this, I think.
Yeah.
All right. Is there a motion? Or are you, do we have a motion?
So move.
Second, but we need to, we need to change it. They sound like Douglas just said. So I would amend the motion to conform with Douglas's comments, that staff has the ability to accept editorial changes only to the MOU and sign it.
First, do you second or not?
I do second.
Yes.
Second.
Nicole, are you...
We're just amending the motion. It's not a motion to amend.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, consideration of multiple mutual aid agreements. First one is Aviation Authority, Charleston County Sheriff's Office, and Charleston County Sheriff's Office Equipment Line.
Motion to approve?
Second. Chief, you want to just kind of give us an overview of what and when?
Really brief. These are the typical mutual aid agreements that we do with these agencies so that they can assist us if we have anything going on over here. Like when we plan and those big responses for anything, this gives them the ability to assist us. The equipment agreement is with the sheriff's office. That is what we've used to have their boat in the past, and it's just being renewed because there's a new sheriff. It's still their boat. We just use it. We answer calls in the water for them in this area. They can come get it whenever they want it. We just, we are able to use it to help patrol the intra-coastal for any issues that are going on there.
Do we keep, do we keep the boat here?
We maintain it in the parking lot over by the police department. And as part of the, part of the agreement is they need to be able to pull up with their truck and just back up to the trailer and take it whenever they're ready.
Wasn't there some talk of having one in the water? Is that a different boat?
We don't have any other boat other than that one in the police department, but it would be ideal to have one there. But Fire, Fire, I think, has one currently in the water.
Okay. That's what I was thinking.
Do these cover the ambulance that comes over here in the summertime?
No, ma'am. This is specific to the sheriff's office, and then the sheriff's office boat, and then the aviation authority officers being able to assist us in, for any events that we have.
The ambulance is county?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Nicole, can we approve all these as, as one, this motion?
I would think so. They're standard.
So we're approving all the mutual aid agreements? You've got a motion and a second.
Councilor Streeman and Councilor Anderson made the motion and second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, consideration of surfing instruction applications. Douglas, you want to...
Yeah, the, the only kind of bit of update I have is we are still, the, there are various parts of our ordinances that various surf instructors have not yet provided proof of compliance. They're required to be insured, have CPR licensing, first aid licensing, lifeguard licensing. There are various stages of having produced that documentation. Two of them now have everything. There's three that are kind of halfway there. We are, if you all would be willing to approve those, with the condition that they satisfy all of the requirements in the code as determined by staff, we'll continue to authorize them as they get their applications complete.
Is there another application that has come in?
Not that I'm aware of.
Kai Dilling didn't make an application?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right. Is there a way of double checking that? Because I was, I've been told that they, they did.
It does come through a different office. I haven't, I haven't received it, but I can, I'll certainly check.
I guess we need to do a subsequent.
If that's on there, if, if, if they have made the application, can they be included in this? If they, you know...
I don't see, if, if you were okay with it, we certainly would be. I mean, we've just been vetting the documentation and the location, that it's reasonably kind of split up. But yeah, I don't see a problem if you all are okay with it. We would be okay with that.
What did the plan on beginning, Douglas?
I don't know exactly the dates. I mean, I...
It's usually, it's usually when, when school gets out, which is this year, earlier than it usually is. So it's June, might even be before June, Memorial Day, certainly after Memorial Day. June 20, May 28, something like that. So probably the first week of June.
Will the pumping interfere with any of these done? Eighth and Sixth, and, I mean, if they're going to be, are, are we going to be open to let them relocate or give them a break here?
Could, could make the water silty. I mean, I, I think that...
It's a little muddy down there.
Yep.
Pumping time.
That's a good point. We may want to provide the flexibility of those to move.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
And that includes potentially approving Kai Dilling's, assuming that all the provisions are met.
Yeah.
And, and authorizes us to shift those in the way of renourishment, a reasonable distance away from the renourishment.
And contingent on them having all the requirements updated.
Katie, you good with that motion?
Yeah, sounds good.
And Ashley, the second.
Got it.
I've got one question with that. You will withhold permission from the applicants who do not have completed applications?
Correct. Yeah, they won't get a, they won't get a license until they, until they've checked all the boxes.
Okay. Good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, boards and commissions report, Board of Zoning Appeals, minutes are attached, Planning Commission, minutes are attached, Accommodation and Tax Advisory Committee, minutes are attached, and Environment and More Advisory Committee, minutes are attached. Next item, ordinances, resolutions and petitions, second reading, ordinance 2025-02, parking fees. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Yes, go ahead.
I'd just like to make one, a couple of comments to this, and that is, we've had a lot of questions about whether we're going to be issuing annual passes this year. And it is not part of this ordinance as it's written now. But we have committed, the Public Safety Committee has committed to taking this up at our next Public Safety meeting to see if we can come to a resolution on that. And the second thing I was just asked to address as well is, we, I guess, we currently have hourly parking rates later in the afternoon, like at 4 o'clock or later. And so I would like to ask that we add that to the agenda, too, when we reconsider. And we can just, to let the public know, what we're passing today can be, easily be amended with an addition.
You're talking about adding it to the agenda of the Public Safety Committee?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then bringing it back as an amended amendment to the ordinance.
So that is something we can change after the fact?
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this ordinance, those fees were set by ordinance, so it had to go through an entire ordinance change. What this is doing is it allows you all to set them by resolution. So it's one meeting, it's one vote. So it will make modifying the rates easier going forward. So it would facilitate doing that.
Makes sense.
Go ahead, sorry.
I just, sounds good.
Yeah. You're good?
All good, yes.
Yes, excuse me, there's, I'm glad you brought this up. There's a lot of concern about this. Major changes for the people that work down there and other people involved in the beach sweeps.
Yeah. I mean, I think working, we still have folks covered with the $60 pass, but it's late afternoon or beach sweeps or other things that are going on. So, John, we'll just let you all bring that back to council at some point. Thank you. Thank you, Jan.
One more thing. I mean, if people need the, there is an annual pass that you can get for the county park, which is right next to our parking lots. So until we get this resolved, there is a solution.
Yeah. And, and we're not in season, other than spring break, obviously, but, you know, kiosk parking hopefully would take care of anybody that needs an hour or two at some point. First, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item, resolution 2025-04, parking fees. Mag, just explain. I mean, we've already done this once, but we're cojoining it with this ordinance, right?
Yeah, so I think last time you maybe made a motion or resolved to have the parking fees changed, but then we realized, oh, shoot, they're set in stone in the ordinance. So we need to amend the ordinance to allow you all to change the fees by way of resolution. So this is just kind of a do-over to get it right.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, executive session in accordance with South Carolina Code, Section 30-4-70A1 and 30-4-70A2, to discuss the city administrator's employment contract upon returning to open session. Council may take action upon...